Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 21st, 2020 Board Meeting. Welcome. We're so happy to see so many friendly faces in the audience. We're going to start with the Student Representative comments. However, they're not here tonight. They're at a track meet. Is that where they're at? At a track meet. So we will do Unsung Hero for January along with Unsung Hero for February at the February meeting. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Dr. Clark.
Thank you, Board President Downing, and thank you for serving as Board President. Welcome to our January Board Meeting. Hard to believe we're here. I feel like I was just wishing everybody happy holidays, but here we are. Like President Downing said, unfortunately, our two Student Representatives, Jake and Kylie, couldn't be here with us, and so we look forward to two Unsung Hero presentations in February. Excuse me. All right. On November 25th, we did a test of our automated calling system, and as we move into January, February, and March, just a reminder that we will be using the automated system to send out any calls in the event that we have a delayed opening or a school closing. But I've already had a chat with Mother Nature, and we're not going to have any of that this year, so hopefully I didn't just jinx us. If by chance you did not receive that automated call, or the text, or the email, please reach out to your building's main office, and we will get that corrected right away. We have quite a few special presentations tonight. Really looking forward to all of them, and I would like to begin with Students of the Month. Mr. Brandis, are you ready for us?
Absolutely.
Great.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here tonight. We do have to celebrate a lot of students and teachers as well, so it's part of the night I certainly enjoy the most. So I first would like to congratulate January's Student of the Month, Jessica Pizano. Congratulations. If you'll please join us here at the podium. I'd like to congratulate her parents as well, who were in attendance tonight. Congratulations. At this time, we're going to watch a brief video on her accomplishments here at Lacy.
Good afternoon. I'm Greg Brandis, Principal of Lacy Township High School, and we're here to congratulate Seniors of the Month. I'd first like to celebrate the accomplishments of Jessica Pizano.
Hi, my name is Jessica Pizano, and I am honored to be January Senior of the Month.
Congratulations, Jessica, on winning Senior of the Month. We're super proud of you.
Jess, congratulations on being January Senior of the Month. Well deserved.
My freshman year, I petitioned to be in all honors classes. And my sophomore year, I joined the very first Leadership Academy of Humanities. I became duly enrolled with Ocean County College my junior year. And my senior year, I am a National Honor Society student and a member of Phi Theta Kappa on the Ocean County College level.
Jess, from the moment I met you sophomore year, you have done nothing but keep your head down and work as hard as anyone I've ever seen in 13 years of teaching here.
Jessica was a member of the first cohort of the Leadership Academy, so not only did she take initiative and become a leader within the school building, she also helped create the program and help it flourish into the successful four-year program that it is now.
Inside high school, I hold the chair position for the club Pure Mediation and Navy Nation, and I'm a member of the National Honor Society. I am also varsity cheerleading for the football, basketball, and competition cheerleading teams. Outside of school, I'm a member of Phi Theta Kappa, which is the Honor Society for Ocean County College, and I'm on an All-Star cheerleading team.
She is a great leader, always a positive role model on the mat, always somebody that we can look to, to be doing the right thing, and an amazing athlete.
Getting my letter was something that I've always dreamed of, so finally receiving my jacket was just a huge moment of accomplishment for me.
Right through last year, your growth has been nothing but short of amazing in the Leadership Academy, and as a student...
I also have to give recognition to my friends for being a part of my journey throughout all four years of my high school experience.
And you've deserved every honor you've gotten, including National Honor Society and the National Honor Society for Leadership at Ocean County College. We could not be more proud of you.
I committed to Ramapo College under early decision and am majoring in psychology. I'm considering doing a minor in business, as I have intentions of becoming an occupational therapist in my future.
Again, congratulations, Jess, for winning Senior of the Month. We can't think of anybody better and more deserving than you. You are going to have a great future, and good luck at Ramapo.
Jess, congratulations again on all of your success. It's only going to be a few months till we're all standing on stage together at graduation, saying goodbye as the first cohort, but you have left your mark on this program, and you have blazed a trail for everyone else who's going to follow. Congratulations and good luck at Ramapo as a Road Runner. Go Road Runners.
Thank you.
We have to be a part of education. We want to wish you a lot of luck. It sounds like you have a bright future, and I'm glad you're already committed to Ramapo.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to congratulate Senior of the Month, Joseph Sabores. Congratulations, Joe and his family. At this time, we're going to watch these accomplishments as well on video. We're back to celebrate the Seniors of the Month for January. Next, we're going to celebrate Joseph Sabores.
Hi, I'm Joe Sabores, and I'm excited to be January Senior of the Month.
Bonjour tout le monde. Joey Sab. Félicitations for winning Student of the Month for January.
Hey, I'd like to congratulate Joseph Sabores on winning Senior of the Month for January.
Who's that?
Joey Sab.
I've challenged myself academically by taking basically the most rigorous courses in the school. I feel like I really like to aim more towards the math and science side of things.
Well, contrary to popular belief, Joey's actually pretty quiet in class, but he's really good at math. Very few kids take calculus II at the Stone High School. Scored one of the highest in the whole school last year on the AP exam.
And he has a real talent for French. He really does. I just think Joey is one of those young men that have, they're just all-round talent and all-round dedication.
The activities I do inside and outside of high school mostly revolved around sports. I played football and lacrosse, and that took a vast majority of my time.
It came as no surprise to me when I saw that Joey had been chosen for the National Honor Society, and it was a really proud moment seeing him up there on that stage, because I knew that he really genuinely deserved it.
Not only is Joey the center of attention in the class, but also he's gaining a lot of attention as center offshore football-wise.
My best high school memory is running out on the field for the Central game. It was the first time we got to play them in eight years, and I was excited to do that.
Joey's just like a really nice guy as well. He always helps out everybody in class if they need it. And he's never, he's never in a bad mood. He's always in a really great mood every single day. Like, he's just an all-around pleasant young man.
As of right now, I'm not sure where I'm going to college yet, but after high school, I plan to study computer science at a four-year school.
So once again, Joe, congratulations for Senior of the Month for January, for being so successful, both on and off the field and in my classroom.
In conclusion, Joey, I'm really proud of you, and this couldn't have happened to a better guy. I know you're going to go on to do amazing things.
And so, Joe, congratulations on the cap of the entire board. We wish you a lot of luck and great job with those math skills. I wish I had those.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Thank you, the Board of Education.
All right. Congratulations to our two Seniors of the Month, Joe and Jessica. Another fabulous round of applause to the both of you. All right. And as we know, academic achievement doesn't just happen by magic, because behind every successful student is an amazing and successful teacher. And January is when we announce our Teachers of the Year for next year, and we're going to do something a little different. So kudos to Mr. Merman for once again putting together an amazing video, which we are going to watch right now. We'll do that after.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Clark, Superintendent of the Lacy Township School District. We are about to surprise each of our brand-new Teachers of the Year, so let's get going. Knock, knock, knock. Hiya. Hello. How's everybody?
Good.
Welcome. Boys and girls, I have a question for you. Do you like surprises? Well, I have a really big surprise. Want to know what it is? Mrs. Schubiger just got awarded Teacher of the Year. How about that? Congratulations. Thank you so much. So deserved. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Schubiger.
Teacher of the Year for Mrs. Gorman. Ready? How are you? Sorry to bother you.
It's okay. Come on in.
So we have a little surprise. Boys and girls, a question. Do you like surprises? Do you like surprises? So we're here to let Mrs. Gorman know that she has been selected as Teacher of the Year. What do you think of that? Thank you so much. Oh, my gosh. That was truly a surprise. That was a very big surprise. I thought you were coming in for Mrs. Maria. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well deserved. All right, so what do you think? Was that an awesome surprise? Very deserving. Very deserving. Another round of applause. So here we go, ready to announce the next Teacher of the Year, Kristy Langen at Cedar Creek. Look at your face. Kristy, you're not in trouble. Mrs. Langen. So I have a question, boys and girls. Do you like surprises? Big surprises? All right, well, we're here to let you and Mrs. Langen know that she has been selected as Cedar Creek's Teacher of the Year. You can show some emotion. You look like you don't know what to do. You don't know what to do. Get a big woo-hoo. I don't know whether it's going to be on TV. Are you surprised? Very. Are you all surprised? I told you. So let me tell you a story. The reason, do you know why Mrs. Langen got chosen as Teacher of the Year? Well, first of all, she's the best, but all of the other teachers in Cedar Creek thought she was the best, and then other people like us, we thought she was the best, and so they probably wanted to come do a surprise. So what do you think? Awesome, right? We are ready to go for Mrs. Mindes, Teacher of the Year.
Hi, it's the working. How are you?
I'm good. How are you? Good. So I have a question. Do you like surprises? Yeah? All right, well, I'm about to surprise Mrs. Mindes. Ready? We are here to tell you that you have been selected as Milpon's Teacher of the Year. Big round of applause for Mrs. Mindes. All right, here we go. Jane DeWitt, Teacher of the Year announcement. Do you like surprises? We like surprises here, right? Well, we're here to let you all know, to let Mrs. DeWitt know, that she has been chosen as Teacher of the Year. For you. Congratulations for you. And I think there are some other things for you. She has to wear that all day? You guys are enjoying this, aren't you? Oh, I wait, oh. These are the best two-party favors. Surprise, Mr. Kolsy. Ready? Mr. Kolsy, good morning. We have the class of announcements. You have been named Teacher of the Year for 2020-2021.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Brandis.
Congrats.
This is last year's winner.
Yes, it's a tradition. So we want to say congratulations. You were chosen by your peers here at the high school, but also by a district committee as well. Well deserved. So glad that you're a part of our team. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, lots more to come. So we just finished visiting all six of our schools and awarding our teachers the very special recognition of Teacher of the Year. What made it more special was that all of the students were there to cheer them on and applaud them. It was a fantastic day. Thanks for joining us.
And so, will all six of our Teachers of the Year please come on down? We have some gifts for you. And principals and supervisors, will you join them as well so we can take a picture?
I'm going to make a care package for all the others. Where's Mr. Kolsy? Where's Mr. Kolsy? Step right up. Mrs. Mindes? Winner-best expression. Mrs. Gorman? Mrs. Schubiger? I've known this one since she was a baby. All right, come on, squeeze it in. And now let's get one with just all six teachers. Yeah? All right.
And while they're taking their seats, I do have to say that all six teachers were surprised, but when we arrived at the high school, and I'm sorry, Mr. Kolsy, I'm going to tell the story. Mr. Kolsy was in his office on a very important phone call, it appeared, and he was trying so hard to get off the phone because he saw us all standing there, and that's why he walked out and said, "What happened?" So we were waiting, and we're waiting. So that was fantastic. And I have to say, Mrs. Mindes, your reaction was quite priceless as well. And Mrs. Langen, I'm pretty sure she did think she was in trouble. So it was a lot of fun. Mrs. DeWitt, you were a great sport doing the crown, and everybody, it was just, it was phenomenal. So thank you for allowing us to create that video. It just occurred to me that I never really asked your permission to show the video, so I hope you liked it. Because it's going to be on our website, too. So just letting you know. All right. Another round of applause for our Teachers of the Year. Yes, we can do that again. All right. And as it has become a custom now, we have our January Lacy Minute.
Good afternoon. We're back.
Cedar Creek is on a mission. La-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. We reduce and recycle. La-la-la-la, la-la-la-la.
The winner of Malacronis is the junior.
And once again, I have to give credit to Mr. Merman for not only putting together the Teacher of the Year video that we all just saw, but also for the Lacy Minute. And as a reminder, please keep your photos and your videos coming. We cannot do the video without all of your contributions. So thank you for that. Another round of applause for Mr. Merman. All right, that concludes our presentations for right now. Okay. In a few minutes, I'm going to let it dismiss everybody, because I know there's homework to do and perhaps maybe even dinner to eat. But I do want to do another teacher recognition. So every year, the radio station WJRZ, which is FM 100.1, holds a Teachers Who Rock contest to recognize teachers in public and private schools in Ocean and Monmouth County who are outstanding. And this year, the middle school and the Lacy Township School District is very excited to announce that Nick Medenski has been nominated and received special recognition in a WJRZ radio announcement as Teachers Who Rock. So congratulations to him. All right. So there are a few other announcements. Oh, actually, you know what? Let me talk a little bit about another special recognition. The Lacy Elks Drug Awareness Essay Contest was an event that took place right before the holidays. The Elks sponsored an essay contest entitled "Life Does Not Rewind: Choose Life, Not Drugs." Approximately 60 students in grades six through eight submitted entries, and everyone who received an entry received a $5 gift certificate to Rich's Ice Cream, courtesy of the Elks. But I'm happy to announce the names of the following students who placed second and third place. They received a $25 TD Bank gift card, and that is John Lorton and Marissa Larney, Milpon students. So congratulations to them. And in first place, receiving a $50 TD Bank gift card is Brianna Biagi, also grade six, Milpon student. So congratulations to her. And finally, congratulations once again to our Seniors of the Month. Congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. You have a lot more ahead of you as you represent us so proudly next year. We have lots in store for you. We will pause right now if anybody wants to take some family photos, if you want to scoot out. We do have the rest of the board meeting to conduct, but please feel free to stay if you'd like to. Good?
Bye-bye. Congratulations. Thank you. What? Nick? Yeah. Yep. How are you? Good, thanks. Oh, that's right. That's right. So you had a good holiday, too? Yeah. Good. Went quick, though, didn't it? Just too quickly. Sometimes not quick enough, and then too quick. Sure, it's time. I'm going to visit you. You know... You're allowed to kick him. Yes.
It's a date.
It's a date.
All right, just a few more comments that I want to make, and then I will turn it back over to President Downing. At the reorganization meeting on, can everybody hear me? Yeah, okay. At the reorganization meeting on January 6th, a member of the community asked about the district's application for emergency aid. I mentioned that we would discuss the application once the board had the opportunity to review the application, and they did just that a few weeks ago. Before we discuss the emergency aid denial letter that that member of the community had mentioned, it is important to understand that the application that we submitted was accompanied by compelling rationale to support the restitution of the $623,000 by which our state aid was reduced. I'm going to read that letter that is addressed to the county superintendent and dated August 7th, 2019. This letter serves to cover our district's 2019-2020 school year application for emergency aid. "The Lacy Township School District continues to wholeheartedly support and has long awaited the construction of a public school funding formula which is fair and equitable for all New Jersey public school districts. We also acknowledge that any formula used to determine school funding must somehow reflect trends in student enrollment. However, and for the following reasons, we seek restitution through the award of emergency aid of 100% of the $623,000 by which our 2019-2020 equalization aid was reduced." I'm going to talk about two categories. Local fair share. "We object to the concept of local fair share as well as to the seemingly arbitrary manner in which each district's local fair share is determined. It appears as though this metric is a way for the state of New Jersey to assign public school districts a share of its obligation to provide equalization aid. We plead with the governor and the legislator to find a way to fully meet that obligation." Adequacy. "We also object to the manner in which each district's adequacy budget is calculated. Specifically, we object to the portion of the calculation related to students with special needs. That calculation determines that 15.4% of a district's projected October 15th, 2019 resident enrollment are classified as students with special needs." It's important for me to say that one more time. "That calculation determines that 15.4% of a district's, any district's, projected October 15th resident enrollment are classified as students with special needs. A district with a classification rate less than 15.4% will benefit from this determination. Unfortunately, the classification rate in our district is 26%. Therefore, we contend that at $7.1 million, our adequacy budget for students with special needs is not adequate. If we applied the formula," now this is not part of the letter, I'm just going to expand on this a little. "If we applied the formula based on our actual classification rate, 26%, we should be receiving $12.1 million, which is a difference of $4.9 million. When incorporated with the other components, and there are many, of the adequacy budget calculation, the district, our district is actually underfunded, not overfunded, as the state is contending." So what does all this have to do with S-2? And we've talked about S-2 at great length. S-2 is a bill that was introduced in 2018 by State Senate, State President Sweeney, State, I'm sorry, Senate President Sweeney, that alters the formula for distributing state aid, shifting approximately $68 million from districts the state considers overfunded to districts considered underfunded. As I just illustrated, we do not agree with the state that we are overfunded, which is why we applied for emergency aid last August. So in December, we received a letter denying our application. In it, it states that information was missing or incomplete. In actuality, the Budget Office asked for clarification on six items out of a voluminous amount of information that we provided. That binder sitting right in front of Mr. DeGeorge is the amount of information that we had to provide electronically, and in years past, both electronically and in paper form. That information is all in that binder. The letter further outlines additional reasons for why our request for emergency aid was denied. And I'm going to ask Mr. DeGeorge to speak to those reasons in addition to some of the things that I just pointed out.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Clark. And that denial letter came almost four months to the day after we submitted our cover letter covering the application itself. So in its denial, the Commissioner of Education provided nine reasons. I'm not going to read all the reasons, but I am going to speak to them. So first, pretty much, he's saying that he's denying it because we were able to submit a balanced budget. So pretty ridiculous reason, if you ask me, because if you attended our budget workshops, you'll know that we don't have a choice. All public school districts by law must submit a balanced budget. So how that stands as a reason for denial, I do not know. Second reason, our student enrollment decreased. Now, we can't argue that. As Dr. Clark said, the formula is based in part on student enrollment. So we should anticipate some decrease in state aid because our enrollment slightly decreased. So we can't argue at that point. But we said as much, I don't know if Dr. Clark read that part, but we admitted in our letter that covered the application that we understand. We want a fair formula. We want, expect it to incorporate trends in enrollment. So that's not surprising. Three, we have too much capacity in our buildings. There's too much space in our buildings. I don't know what that means. I don't know how that relates to denying our application for aid, but it's in there. We did not seek a tax levy increase beyond 2%, speaking to what's called bank cap. The commissioner says it was available. It was not. But here's the hidden meaning, and I don't know if you catch this. The commissioner's saying, "Don't ask us, the state, for it. Ask your taxpayers," which Dr. Clark already said in her letter to the county office. "We have a tax base which is paying more than its local fair share. We didn't make that up. The governor made that up." So they're telling us, "Take it from the taxpayers." That's very important to remember. "We failed to budget 100% of our extraordinary aid." There's no way we could have done that because the budget was approved in May 3rd, and we didn't even know what our extraordinary aid was going to be until August. So it's not possible for us to have done that. But at the same time, we budgeted what turned out to be 80 to 90% of our extraordinary aid as a guess as to what we were going to get in the budget. So it's, why they're hurting us for that, I don't know. "We failed to use," number six, "we failed to use excess surplus to balance the budget." So this tells me that in part, a non-financial person wrote this letter. Because we've talked about this, excess surplus is nothing more than that amount of our fund balance, the equity on our balance sheet, that we are not permitted by law to keep. Instead, we are required by that same law to appropriate that excess surplus in the next available budget. However, it is common practice that these excess surplus, which is only around for one year, is not used on sustainable items like payroll and benefits. We talked about this, every time we talk about excess surplus in a budget. But they're telling us to do that, to budget non-sustainable funds against sustainable items. What they're telling us, and this is the second most important part, they are telling us to crawl back out onto the fiscal cliff from which we inched ourselves back not too long ago. They're telling us that it's not good that we're running our district financially responsibly, that it's not important to them. So they're saying, "Empty the bank. Go back to where you were. Go back to a time when you couldn't pay your bills. Go back to a time when you had no equity in your balance sheet, but don't ask us." So that's also extremely important to remember. Number seven, "we failed to use our maintenance reserve account." If you recall, there are two reserve accounts. There's a capital reserve for capital projects and a maintenance reserve for maintenance. In fact, we are going to take money tonight out of both of those for an unforeseen project at the middle school. We have $44,000 in that account. Fine, $44,000, but it doesn't equal $623,000. Number eight, health benefits decrease. We budgeted an increase. Everyone did. But if we're in the state plan like we were, premiums actually decreased. And I'm going to tell you on camera for everyone to hear, if that did not happen, and we did not get breakage from that decrease, we wouldn't be able to run the district this year. All of that money was used on all the unforeseen things that we had budgeted, and we're not even just about halfway through the year. So they're faulting us for using the money where it was needed. So they're not giving it to us. And then nine, they're saying that recent contract settlements were higher than the average. So they're penalizing us for paying our teachers a fair wage. And there you have it. Nine reasons. Maybe one, the enrollment issue. I, as the financial advisor of this district, can understand. The rest I don't. So maybe you can, your opinion differs, but from where we sit, it's a letter that kind of tells me that they didn't even read the compelling case that we presented in our August letter. That's all I have.
So now what? Can we appeal the letter that we appealed, or where do we go from here?
Right. I suppose yes, we can, and we probably should. At least write a rebuttal to the commissioner's letter. But I'll tell you this, and Dr. Clark and Mr. Decker and I spoke about this several times already. Rest assured that whether it's protocol or not, when we build our 2020-2021 budget, we're going to cover that with a memo right from the very beginning to tell them all the things we might have to do because they see us in a way that we are not. So yes, we will respond, but we'll see what happens.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeGeorge, for outlining that. We wanted to provide that explanation because I know that there have been questions. You know, the emergency aid and S-2 school budget, and the cuts that not only the Lacy Township School District has been experiencing, but others in Ocean County and beyond. It's a complicated and a convoluted topic. And if there are questions, we encourage you, as we do with all things, to give me a call, give Mr. DeGeorge a call, give Mr. Decker a call. We will always make ourselves available to explain whatever we can, again, regarding this topic and any other. The last thing I wanted to mention is, back on December 13th, the Lacy Patch ran an article about this very topic, and the headline read, "Lacy Wanted $623,000 in Emergency School Aid, State Gave Zero." And again, we're not alone in that regard either. Just in that article, Brick Township also submitted an application for emergency aid. Nothing was awarded. Point Pleasant Borough requested restitution. Nothing was awarded. And of course, we were as well. And in several other districts where aid was awarded, the amount that was requested and the amount that was awarded, the difference was just incredible. To give you an example, Toms River requested in their emergency aid, $4.5 million, and they were awarded $854,000. So it is a complicated and convoluted topic, but again, we will always make ourselves available to answer any questions that any member of the community has. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, President Downing, for the opportunity to present.
And thank you both for presenting that information because I know there's things out there that need to be straightened out. So thank you. We appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand, and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments should be addressed to the board president. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to comment have been recognized. And please use the microphone over here. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Sir? Please state your name and address.
Yes.
Dan Leonard. I live in Beechwood. So I've been fighting this fight in Toms River for quite a while. Some things that, you know, we've made some progress, but the same, in the same position as you. What we're doing is we're setting an example for our children. And where if you're fiscally responsible, you're going to, you're going to get slapped instead of rewarded. And that's the district, that's what I find most of the districts in the state that are facing what we're facing here in Toms River are dealing with. Some things that I brought up at the committee meetings and at the state level, I was on the school board, NJ SBA Board of Directors for a year. I'm off the school board now because of the politics and the bureaucracy. And I know managing through the bureaucracy of this, this issue is very complex. But a couple of things that I want to bring up to Lacy as well is that, I don't know, when was the last time Lacy was reevaluated or reassessed as a town?
Two, three years ago?
Yeah. I think it's important that the citizens of Lacy understand that there's towns in New Jersey that have not been reassessed or reevaluated in 35, 40 years. So the governor and Sweeney and the rest of them, they like to call it the fair funding formula, but does it even exist? Because nobody's even seen it. So when we're talking about the funding formula, I call it the alleged funding formula, because nobody has seen it through Oprah requests and all these other things. Nobody's been able to get it. Okay? So what does that tell you? Does it even exist? Why are some towns being treated differently than others? Like, we just talked about the difference in the numbers. But the other thing that I, that I recommend Lacy do besides push back on the why, why are we being punished for, we're doing everything right. We're showing you the books. We're reevaluating, reassessing. We're doing everything that our taxpayers are coming forward to doing, everything they're supposed to do. That's not the answer. I think most of us know not going to the taxpayers when, when there's a funding formula that's not working. That's not the answer. But the other thing that I brought up to Toms River the other day was Congressman Andy Kim works, you know, he's our, he's our congressman. It's a state issue that we're talking about. However, what's, what's probably the best thing to do, because what we're doing is we're fighting, we're fighting something from the ground up against the state, and they can deny, deny, deny everything we're asking them to do. But what they can't deny is the fact that if we were to ask our congressman to do a congressional inquiry through the Department of Education, the Federal Department of Education, through the Office of the Inspector General, which is, you can do that online. I mean, you have, you have your numbers. You know exactly what information you need to put in there. Like we just talked about the difference in the numbers. But the other thing that I, that I recommend Lacy do besides push back on the why, why are we being punished for, we're doing everything right. We're showing you the books, we're reevaluating, reassessing, we're doing everything that our taxpayers are coming forward to doing, everything they're supposed to do. That's not the answer. I think most of us know not going to the taxpayers when, when there's a funding formula that's not working. That's not the answer. But the other thing that I brought up to Toms River the other day was Congressman Andy Kim works, you know, he's our congressman. It's a state issue that we're talking about. However, what's, what's probably the best thing to do, because what we're doing is we're fighting, we're fighting something from the ground up against the state. And they can deny, deny, deny everything we're asking them to do. But what they can't deny is the fact that if we were to ask our congressman to do a congressional inquiry through the Department of Education, the Federal Department of Education through the Office of the Inspector General, which is, you can do that online. I mean, you have, you have your numbers, you know exactly what information you need to put in there. We do a congressional inquiry to get this funding formula. And not, not only are we fighting from the ground up, then you have the federal government pushing down on Trenton. Because I mean, we're taxpayers, everybody's a taxpayer. They're not supposed to hide things from us. It's supposed to be transparent. There's a process. You fill out paperwork, you're supposed to get it, redact it if necessary. But I, I think that's just another avenue that everybody that's in this lawsuit should look at, talking to the congressman saying, you know, because if you say you're going to file an inquiry in Toms River and all the other towns that have signed on to this, power and numbers, you got thousands and thousands of people upset. Now it's at the federal level. What's going on? It sounds like fraud, waste, and abuse to me. Why districts that are fiscally responsible cannot get fiscal information from an agency that's using it against you? So that's all I have to say. You've got to start thinking outside the box. Now that I'm not on the board, I'm wandering around to districts that are in the same position. I'm trying to be an ambassador to do things that the boards can't. You guys are very restrictive. I know how it is. So I'm trying to help from, as well as all the other citizens in here, need to be a voice for your district. Congressional inquiry and, you know, that's, I think that we need to start thinking that way. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. And just let me add that everything that you just mentioned, all that contact information is on our website. Names of senators and legislators, phone numbers, emails, and...
And we've done that, you know, around, and everything. And they know, they know that we can only do so much. Now take it to the next level. And I'm trying to be thankful.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was really good information. Anyone else in the public? Please come up, state your name and address.
I wanted to take this opportunity to make a public apology to the taxpaying citizens, employees, and mostly the students of Lacy Township School District. I'm partially humbled that I would be on the minds of such influential individuals in this community. It turns out, my life is not as exciting as some of yours. And despite the efforts by those in charge of tax monies, not enough incriminating evidence was found about me, I guess. I've never been arrested. I'm up to date on my taxes. There are no liens on my house. I have a great credit rating. My professional nursing license and driver's licenses are clean. I've not been involved in a domestic or had any assault charges. And ironically, unlike some who did the research on me, you can't say the same for yourselves. So while many individuals and business owners in this community extended their generosity of over eight-thousand dollars towards our lunch debt, our past board president, our current board president, and one of the board attorneys were involved in expending time, resources, and thousands of dollars trying to dig up dirt on me for no reason. These individuals have no problem with checks being written out to the specific board attorney while handing out cheese sandwiches to children and collecting a cashier's check of over, of almost nine-thousand dollars from our generous community members. This unruly spending of public tax dollars was only found by accident. What other private citizens are you spending this kind of money on? How much more money is being spent under the radar and approved by board members without any justification? I'm here to remind all of you that public meetings are just that, public. So being irritated that I, as a taxpaying citizen, with children who are attending your schools in this district, can and will continue to attend any public meeting I choose to. If what I observe, have concerns about, or feel the need to comment on bother you, then let's talk about it. You, all of you, have an open invitation as of tonight to contact me with anything that I say or do that doesn't sit well with you. Just avoid the 3:00 AM text messages. I have no problem speaking with you, meeting with you, discussing things in a reasonable manner. But I absolutely do have a problem, a big problem, with my name being topic of conversation in the board office without my involvement. Remember, I'm not your employee anymore. I am a private citizen. Anything you have to say to each other, or anyone else for that matter, should involve me if it's about me. And that goes for your buddies who use social media in the past as a weapon, but behave cowardly face-to-face in public. I can't help but believe that the chip that sits prominently on your shoulders is somehow related to something I must have said or did to offend you or your ego. We may not agree on a lot of things, and we may not like each other at all, but I'm not going anywhere. And I have a right to be here. So if you don't plan on going anywhere, then we need to come to terms with how to function together in this small community. It is a refreshing thought to think that it's a new year and a new decade with some fresh faces. At the reorganization meeting a couple of weeks ago, Linda and Rob mentioned something to the effect of, let's move on. Well, while moving on sounds great, too much has been said and too much has been done. And once the dust settles, I do hope that we can all move onward and upward. But I can't fix your behavior, only you can. I hope that you will all do some soul searching and some self-reflection on what's happened in the past. You need to make those choices and right what you've done wrong. Then maybe this community will be able to see big changes from the poor dynamics and dysfunction and transition into true integrity as we all move on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And as the board president, you have a right to come to any meeting and speak what you have on your mind. And just, that's all I'm going to say for now. Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to board comments. Tonight, can we start with you, Skip?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to start off with congratulating Teachers of the Year. Great job. Keep it up. In regard for the opportunity for public comment at our meetings, I'd like to encourage more positivity and recognize some things the district are doing right. Over the past two to three weeks, I've taken some time to reflect on some of the amazing accomplishments that I've seen throughout the district. Number one, while attending the middle school wrestling match at Jackson School, I observed wrestler from the opposing team being extremely violent towards one of our wrestlers at Lacy. The wrestler had to stop the, the referee had to stop the match three times before the opposing team that some of the moves were too aggressive and non-compliant. All three times, the other team's wrestler went after our guy from Lacy. Our wrestler never got upset, never lost his temper. He stayed calm, collected, and he ended up winning the match, displaying tremendous sportsmanship taught by our own district's coaches. Number two, last week, Dr. Clark, Mr. DeGeorge, myself, and the new facilities manager, Mr. Olivera, had a meeting at 7:00 AM to introduce ourselves and discuss our strategies regarding the maintenance of our facilities. Each and every question I asked, Mr. Olivera had an extremely informative answer and was eager to help. He has an extensive and experienced resume in facilities management, and I think the administration made a great choice. Therefore, I'd like to take this time to thank the administration and board members for picking him for this job. Number three, all positive. I had an opportunity Saturday to stop by the Fisherman's Flea Market. Unfortunately, due to time constraints, I showed up as vendors were starting to leave. I stopped the vendors in the parking lot to discuss our experience. Many of them commented on how organized the show was, what a great event it was. One vendor was even telling me that next year he's doubling the size of his booth. I'd like to applaud Jeremy Mormon as his fishing club, Sean Zachar, the National Honor Society members, who were able to assist, as well as Renee Risen and her students who ran the cafe throughout the day. Number four, I had the opportunity to attend a varsity wrestling match at Barnard High School. We have a wrestler named Mark McGuire, who has a slight disadvantage against other wrestlers. His opponent's record was thirteen and four. Mark used pure strategy and skill to win this match. He is now running for the Shore Conference Wrestler of the Week. If you have the time and courage to go out and vote for him. These four examples are some of the things our district should be extremely proud of and things I hope we can shed more light on during our public comment times. I'm looking forward to taking the time to recognize the academic, athletic, individual, and district-wide accomplishments for 2020. I got a text about a half hour ago. Mark is winning at forty-seven percent, and the next wrestler for Wrestler of the Week, I think, is at like twelve percent. So I think he did well with that. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate our Teachers of the Year. You know, they're chosen by their peers and, you know, there's a, there's a whole lot of teachers out there that deserve the award. Unfortunately, they can only pick one. But I know would have my children go through the school system. I know there's tremendous amount of teachers in all the schools in our district, and I applaud all of them, especially the ones that won this year. I want to congratulate our Seniors of the Month. I was telling Joseph, I've known him since he's probably been in diapers, and I just didn't realize his legal name was actually Joseph. Everybody knows him as Joey. So, and Jessica, if you're watching this, you know, if psychology's not going to be your thing in the future, you certainly have the ability to be on television, how comfortable you stood in front of that camera with your bright smile and the way you spoke. So certainly, that could be a future for you also. But good luck to, to both of you and our unsung hero. We'll congratulate you. Next month, I want to thank Dr. Clark and Mr. DeGeorge for their review of our emergency aid. There's been a lot of rumor and speculation and some, some bad press directed towards our superintendent, which I had the privilege to see. And it's, you know, I'm glad they clarified that and hopefully some people will look at, listen to what was said and, and realize that, you know, we just didn't sit back and take this lightly. And I'm going to ask, you know, for Mr. Leonard came up, I was thinking if it's possible as a board that we, we pass some type of resolution as a whole board to send to our legislators in our district and maybe push for some type of state investigation as to, as to the funding for our schools and how unfair it is, especially to our district. And I think that's something we should look into as a board to pass a resolution. Other than that, I just want to, again, congratulate our winners and move it off from there. Thank you.
Is that what I do? Yeah, I'm one. Okay. Hi. I just, I was sworn in tonight and I took the oath of office. And I just want to thank the community for re-electing me. It feels great to be back and to serve the community. And I promise I'll do the best I can to help the children and the community. One thing that I love about the position is being able to go get invites to different concerts and events and classrooms and take tours of the district. So now that I'm newly retired, I'll be able to do a lot and see a lot in the community. So that's great. I won't be telling you during the comments everything I do during the week because that's too many things. And I feel it's not about me up here, it's about what the students do. So I'll be out there, you just won't be hearing all the things that I go to. When I served last time, one thing I did was spotlight on graduates. So each month, I let the community, the public know different things that graduates are doing because our graduates are doing so many wonderful things. And it's good for the public to know that there were many success stories if they went to college, VOTech, serving in the military. So I might as well start tonight. It'll be short and sweet. Joe Tolino, he graduated in 2010. He went to Sacred Heart College. Now he's a physician's assistant at Seaview Orthopedics. Hunter Smith graduated in 2011. She graduated from Elizabethtown College. She's now an occupational therapist at Shore Rehab. And then Michael Martinak, he graduated in 2011. He went to George Washington University. And just recently, he was commissioned as an ensign in the United States Army, United States Navy, as an intelligence officer. So we're very proud of all our graduates. If anyone out there has any for me to report, I'd be glad to. And like I said before, I'm happy to be back. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Donna. We missed you doing that while you were gone. So glad you're bringing it back up. At this time, Mrs. DeSenza, could you go next, please?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to our Senior Students of the Month, Joe Sabares and Jessica Pizzano. And next month, we'll be able to honor unsung hero, Anna Roth. Special congratulations and thank you to outstanding Teachers of the Year. There was a holiday musical performed by the third grade at Lenoka Harbor School on December seventeenth, "The Pirate's Christmas." It was a very unique show. Great job by all, and sincerest thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Ferruccia and the third grade staff. The show was really great. On Wednesday night, December eighteenth, the Mill Pond School Holiday Band and Chorus Concert was held at the high school. Great performances by all. Thank you to all the music teachers and parents that helped make these special events possible. Thursday, December nineteenth, was a holiday concert at Forkett River School. Great songs, the students were wonderful. Thank you to the community for all the very generous donations on this month's agenda, especially the lunch money donation. Next week, there are three more concerts coming up. Forkett River School Winter Band on the twenty-eighth, Lenoka Harbor School Winter Band is Wednesday, and Cedar Creek School Winter Band is Thursday, January thirtieth. The High School Science Fair is coming soon, February twentieth, at 6:30 in the Media Center. This month, the bills tally over nine-point-three million dollars. One big payment this month is one million, three-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. This particular payment is the solar bond debt payment, and it's made twice a year on January fifteenth and July fifteenth. There was a payment for a benefit card. The district's prescription coverage this month was three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. And the payment this month for Delta Dental for the district is forty-five-thousand-ninety-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Just, you know, when the bills are nine-point-three million dollars, I look at them really closely. The next board meeting will be held on a Tuesday also, February eighteenth. Six PM is our agenda meeting, seven PM is the public portion. Please try to attend, and thank you to all in attendance here tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Downing.
Thank you, Mrs. DeSenza. Mr. Scanlon, and would you also report about Finance Committee meeting at the same time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. First, I'd like to congratulate the Seniors of the Year, Jessica Pizzano and Joseph Sabares for attaining that honor. Also like to just mention that the middle school winter concert this past week was very entertaining, well-done. And I, we enjoyed it. We went as a family to watch my grandson, among others. The meeting we had in terms of Finance Committee, we discussed the state letter, which has been discussed by both Superintendent and Mr. DeGeorge. And we had some very preliminary comments discussing the upcoming revenue and cost projections for the next budget. Did a review of the, there was a review of our food cafeteria procurement, and we received a letter from the firm of PKF O'Connor Davis. And basically, any recommendations they had made in that had already been instituted. So that, that seems to have been pretty successful. The, other than that, the other issue that came up was the HVAC issues at the middle school where there was a power outage that caused damage to our facility at about a cost of a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. This is covered by insurance. There is a deductible, and we will be going to JCPN to get our deductible refunded. So all in all, that should come out to be no cost. But it had created some issues in terms of temperature. Just wanted to make sure that parents were aware that the temperature has been monitored at all times, and it's... And it's always been within the proper guidelines as far as occupation, you know, the occupation of the space. So there's been no, there's been no issues where the temperature was below, I guess you would call it state mandated level? Yes, okay. So, and that basically summarizes what our meeting was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. And Mr. Riggs, could you also report on policy when you make your comment?
Yes. Thank you, President Downing. So last Monday, myself, Frank, and Skip met up for policy. It was kinda light as far as policy goes. We didn't have too much to go over. We have Policy 9200, which is cooperation between parents and schools. That was a revision where we just went down, and it said pupils four times within that policy. So anytime it says that, we have to go in and change it to students. And then we have to vote on it up here. But that's what we did on that one. Policy 9541, student, teachers, interns. The fifth paragraph, we took out the word intern. Same thing. We took out one word, and now we have to talk about it up here. But I'd rather explain it to everyone 'cause not everyone can, you know, rifle through the policies and figure out what we're doing here. The next one was a little more, a little more complicated or a little more involved. Policy 0155, there's two parts of that that we're gonna go over. The first part is President Downing wanted to change one thing about the way we do committees. The way we have them now is we have three supercommittees. It used to be a whole lot more. What, you used to have 12 way back when? All right. So we have three supercommittees. And of those supercommittees, finance was stacked really heavy. Finance has a lot in it. I'll tell you everything that was in finance. Finance, facilities, building and grounds, food service, human resources, personnel, security, technology, transportation, and township liaison was all within that finance. She pared that way down, and she wants to make a facilities committee, which we're gonna, we talking about that tonight for the first time? Yeah, we'll do a first read for Facilities Committee, which will be activated in March 'cause we're gonna do a first read tonight, second read in adoption in February. And then we'll have a Facilities Committee. So what's coming out of finance and going into facilities is facilities, building and grounds, food service. And that is gonna be it. But that's gonna take quite a bit out of finance. Where technology is dropping down into curriculum and safety and security is going into policy. So it's only leaving finance, just dealing with finance, transportation, and township liaison, which is a lot more manageable for them. So that's something we're gonna, well, we will vote on it tonight. But that's what's going on there. The second part of 0155 is an ad hoc negotiations committee that Board Member DeSenza has been asking us to talk about and look into. And we still are talking about that and looking into it. The last thing would be, I'll wade into this a little bit here. No, two more things. As far as safety and security because that is something that we deal with in policy. The Alice, you know, guys know what the Alice stands for. Family and Community Module will be available on the school website. It's not up there yet, but it will be available. And we are still gonna be in coordination with the police and everyone else, the active shooter drills and things like that. This is an ongoing thing. We just keep on going back to it. But guys, we can't be too safe out there. You guys know what's going on. So they are real diligent in this regard, and they never, they never let up. Always, always doing these active shooter drills. They pop up all over the place. The last thing is, we only went into this in discussion only. And this is just to really clear something up 'cause it even came up again here tonight a couple of times. The outstanding food service charges and the cheese sandwich. So the cheese sandwich is not the full picture, as I'm sure you may or may not know. What's also offered with that? There's a fruit, there's a vegetable, there's a juice, there's a milk. Now, if someone was just to take just that sandwich and just say, "Well, this is all they give me." Well, then that's, that's the idea you're gonna have. But there is more to it, to that. And there's also a second option out there. They can have a bagel and then all the fruits and vegetables and juice and milk and all that stuff, too. So you can get a bagel with cream, cheese, and butter and all that stuff, too. So it's not just the cheese sandwich. I agree with you, it's kinda nasty, just the cheese sandwich. But that's not the full picture of what's going on out there. So again, that's something that we are still talking about. We're not gonna vote on it or anything tonight. But that's a discussion. So you guys are having that discussion. We are on our side, too. And that's all I have. Thank you, President Downing.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Okay. Last but not least, I wanna, again, welcome Mrs. McAvoy to the board, back to the board. Glad to have you. Wanna congratulate all our Teachers of the Year. I loved the video, watching the children be surprised as well as the teachers. And that is such an honor for our teachers to be selected by their peers, to get that recognition which they truly deserve. So congratulations to each and every one of them. Also, congratulations to our Students of the Month. Every month, I'm amazed at some of the talent that comes across these board meetings. And Jessica, yes, I agree with you, Frank. Her personality, she could probably be a newscaster or sports announcer. She's very personal. And Joseph, with the talent for math, they're both great selections. So congratulations. I, too, attended the middle school concert. In fact, I sat two rows in front of Mr. Scanlon watching my grandchildren as well. It was a great concert. It was chorus and band, seventh and eighth grade. And they did a great job moving all those kids around on the stage. That was a feat in itself. I wanna thank, again, Dr. Clark and Mr. DeGeorge for explaining the application for emergency aid. I know there was a lot of stuff out there on the internet. And so I hope it clarified everything. So thank you for taking the time to do that. Let's see if I got, oh, and one more thing. The other day, I guess it was last Friday or last Wednesday, I actually went over to Transportation with Mr. DeGeorge to look at our new piece of machinery, if you can call it a machine. It's a snow removal system where the buses, if it ever snows, and it won't because we have this now. So there'll be no snow. But if there were snow,